Good evening and welcome to the Merrill Area Public Schools Board of Education Meeting. MAPS respects the role that our elected board members serve and the function of our board meetings. Board members and administrators are committed to work in collaboration to provide our students with the highest level of achievement. This meeting is a formal event and professional conduct is the expectation for all attendants. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. On our agenda next is public comments to the board. I did not have any machines turned in this evening, so we will move right on to administrative reports. Board members have had the opportunity to ask questions offline to different administrators or the superintendent in preparation for tonight, but if they have additional questions, I'll turn it over to Mr. Murray to guide us through administrative reports.
Thank you, Kevin. Some of this content is found elsewhere in the agenda, but I'm just going to run through the reports and see if there's any questions or comments as a number of directors are here tonight. So first up is the Director of Specialized People's Services report focusing on some inclusion through street reporting that was shared at CTP. Amber Luska is here this evening. Are there any questions for her? Seeing none, the next item is Director of Business Services report focusing on the fiscal year 24 budget, P card procedures, personnel report, job shortages, et cetera. Dr. Strike is here as well. Are there any questions or comments? Next is the Director of Villas and Grounds transportation update, some summer projects updates, transportation, et cetera, et cetera, from Dale Bergman. Dale is not here, but perhaps I could give the old college try and answer any question he might have.
Or Fortinado. We're supposed to blow up the hole in the street. We're holding the street. There's Rocky Air Station.
And then next is my report. I talk about personal updates for this current school year administrative team transitions and focus on literacy. I will say we feel better this week than we did last week about staffing. We feel better today than we did yesterday about staffing. So every day we're taking another chunk off. We're getting creative and a little more proactive with some things and some things are falling in line, I would say. So I did have in that topic summary sheet some of the administrative transitions because there have been a number. I want to introduce Amanda Patterson who's here tonight. She's waving to us in the back. She's our new CNI director. And so she officially starts tomorrow. So we're happy to have her here tonight.
Welcome.
Welcome. Kevin, we were talking the other day how our team is pretty green. And I look at them, it's like Amber's first year, first job, Ryan's second year at his job, Megan's taking on a new job, Chris is new, Amanda is new, Kelly's second year, I'm second year. We kind of kid that we're like an expansion NFL team with all the new faces. But not to be confused with, we are, I think we're really good and we've had really good health meetings and there's a really good vibe and good people, so I'm looking forward to what the year can bring. So, so welcome, Amanda. Any questions on my report? Now that will turn it over to Kevin.
All right, thank you, Shannon. Next on our agenda is committee reports. We'll start with the Finance Human Resources Committee. Draft minutes were provided from the August 9th meeting. Ron Liberty is chair. Additional members of the Finance Human Resources Committee are available for questions from the board members. Any board members have questions for the Finance Human Resources Committee members? Any questions for Finance Human Resources Committee? Hearing none, we'll move on to CTP or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee. Draft minutes were attached from that August 9th meeting. Paul Prue is chair and additional members of the CTP committee are available for questions from board members. Do any board members have questions from that meeting or that committee? Questions for our CTP committee? Hearing none, we will continue on. On the agenda, under unfinished business, we currently do not have anything, so we will go to new Board of Education business, starting with approval of the contract between Lincoln County Health Department and Pine River School for Young Learners for health screening services. That topic summary sheet was provided by Ryan Martinevich, and there is a recommended motion from our CTP committee. We have a motion this evening. Paul?
I move to approve the health service agreement between Lincoln County Health Department and Pine River School for Young Learners for the 23-20-24 school year.
Motion by Paul. We have a second by Ron. Do you have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the approval of the contract between Lincoln County Health Department and Merrill Area Public Schools for grades 4K through 12 and Northern Achievement Center. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Amber Luska and a recommended motion from our CTP committee. We have a motion this evening. Ron?
Make a motion to approve the Lincoln County Health Department's school health services agreement for the 2023-2024 school year, grades 4K to 12, and MAC, a recurring cost that's annually built into the district budget.
We have a motion by Ron. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Kendra. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Any questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda this evening is Coach Physicians for Social Promotional Learning, or SEL curriculum. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Amber Luska and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Paul?
Move to approve the new SEL coach position as presented.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on the motion or this topic this evening? Any discussion on this motion or topic? Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the 2024 to 2026 Boys' Ice Hockey Cooperative, or Co-op Renewal. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Christopher Han, a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the renewal of the 2024-2026 WIA Boys' Ice Hockey Co-op between Merrill, Los East, and Los New and Catholic.
Motion by Kendra. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening?
I have questions.
Go ahead, Linda.
Maybe questions for you over there.
Chris, come up to the table, please.
You got it.
Thank you.
Do you, do you know how the expenses are split between the three teams?
We pay $5,000 hours total. Or no, I'm sorry, they're girls. We pay for officials. It's slightly under 50% of what the program would cost us. And again, this will most likely only be for next year as we should be joining the GNC in the 2025-26 school year.
The GNC?
Great Northern Conference. We're going to get out of the valley.
Okay, so does that mean?
That means the co-op will end up dissolving after one year.
Okay.
So just be for one year, most likely.
Just so then it would just be Merrill kids on the team?
Correct.
And do we have enough kids on the Merrill team?
We don't currently. We should in the next probably two years. We have, we had good middle school numbers, but like right now, we do need a co-op.
I was just wondering because it seems quite a bit of chunk of change for us to be paying versus what are, do you know what they're spending on? Like, is it even, is it like?
It don't. Well, we pay less than half.
Okay, less than half.
Yeah, yeah.
It's fair, I will tell you that. It started out as a 50-50, but it's eased. Then when Newman came in, those percentages were adjusted or the costs were adjusted.
I was just asking. I know they're going to be having a fundraiser coming up here and that's to like, I'm assuming purchase pads and gear and things like that.
That would be the Busacab.
Yeah.
So that, that one, you may follow directly with any of the participating schools.
All right, sounds good. That's all? I'm not too bad.
No, no, no.
Does anyone have additional questions on this motion or topic? All right. Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries.
Thanks, Chris.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Policy 54-10 Promotion Placement and Retention. There's some revisions that were tabled actually back at the March meeting after some further discussion. There was a recommended motion from our CTP committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Paul?
I move to approve Policy 54-10 Promotion Placement and Retention as presented.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the approval of the updated activities handbook with the topic summary sheet provided by Christopher Han and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion this evening? Ron?
Recommend a motion to approve the updated activities handbook.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Kendra. Any discussion or questions on this particular motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the approval of the event workers pay. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Chris Han and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic tonight? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to approve the event workers pay compensation plan for the 2023 to 2024 school year.
Motion by Kendra. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this topic or motion? Any discussion or questions on the topic or motion? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the approval of the musical fall play accompaniment compensation. Attached was a topic summary sheet from Chris Han and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic tonight? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the updated fall play spring musical coaching advisory pay, advisor pay.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is a review of annual meeting budget presentation, the 2023-2024 budget book draft and the fiscal year 24 preliminary budget approval. It's an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Kelly Strike as well as the draft of the state of the district and budget book with a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Do we have a motion on this topic this evening? Paul?
I move to approve the fiscal year 24 preliminary budget to bring forward to the annual meeting in September as presented.
We have a motion by Paul. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or this topic this evening? All right, Kendra?
And I know that it says draft date, so like all of that, that's not the updated data yet until, right, okay. I just want to make sure.
I believe part of that is tied to the audit and putting together all the final numbers.
Yeah, and then new administration. Yeah.
Getting all of the dust settled.
Okay.
Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is a resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in an amount not to exceed $4,500,000. Issuance of tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes plan with an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Strike. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the resolution authorizing temporary borrowing in the amount not to exceed $4,500,000. Issuance of taxable tax and revenue anticipation promissory notes and participation in the PMA levy and aid anticipation notes plan program and approving Dr. Kelly Strike as the acting fiscal agent for MAPS regarding signatures required on the day of the offering and other documentation related to this power.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any questions or discussion on this motion or topic?
What's our bond rating?
Dr. Strike, do you happen to know our current bond rating?
Are you asking interest rate or?
No, what is our bond rating? What are we, how are we rated as a district?
I don't know. I don't recall that time.
Okay. And will this affect our rating?
We borrow every year and we do it as a consortium, so I don't know if they go off of each individual's bond rating anyway because of a second look into that. So, but we do this every year. It's part of a consortium of the plan group and our interest rate is not to exceed 6%. And it will be finalized within 48 hours of closing of the contract.
Any thought what the interest rate might be?
They're thinking in the range of about four and a half is what they're anticipating, but they want to be conservative on a resolution.
Who is a consortium? Who are we involved with?
Um, there's over, I think it's like 20 plus schools. I could get you a list, but there's over 20 school districts across the state.
I was wondering more than just around here.
Oh, yes, yep, across the state.
Okay.
Several in the Milwaukee area. I want to say there's 20, but there could have been more of that during this year as well. So we'll get the final list when we're all together. There's two different groups and so we're part of Group A, but there's Group A and Group E. Pretty popular to work together. There's some power in doing this together, obviously, in terms of, power in terms of financial advantage by doing it together as a group and having financial advisors. They can, so we're borrowing, but they also can invest to kind of help offset the interest cost.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Well, we have Dr. Strike up here. Anyone else have additional questions on this motion or topic? Ron, go ahead.
Just one point, this is short-term borrowing. This isn't borrowing to do anything. This is very short-term, just to pay the bills.
Pay bills. Mm-hmm. Yep. So I will pay back last year's borrowing on September 26th and then I think the date is October, it's early October, then we'll get the money. We were part of Group B last year and it's more preferred being Group A to get our money a little bit sooner as things can get really tight at the end of October, early November.
Okay, thank you.
We continue though from, if you saw from 6.4, as we add more of our fund balance, you can see that the amount we're borrowing is decreasing a little bit as well each year. Also, it's up to 4.5 right now and my guess is 3.7 to 3.8.
That would be good. All right, thanks. Last call for questions or discussion on this motion or topic? Otherwise, based on the importance, I'd like a roll call vote, please, Tammy.
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Kendra Otten?
Aye.
Jacqueline Grumler?
Aye.
Linda Yingling?
Aye.
Paul Prue?
Aye.
Kevin Blight?
Aye. All right. Thank you for your assistance, Tammy. Next on our agenda is the Compensation Plan Adjustment with an attached topic summary sheet from Dr. Strike and Shannon Murray with the recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on the topic tonight? Kendra?
I recommend a motion for the approval of the adjustments to the teachers compensation plan for 2023-2024.
Motion by Kendra. Do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. Do we have any discussion or question on this motion or topic this evening? Any discussion or questions on the motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is the 2023 Six Gen iPad Buyback. Topic summary sheet was provided by Andrew Kahler and a recommended motion from our Finance Human Resources Committee. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Kendra?
I recommend a motion to the approval to let administration sell portions of the Six Gen iPads as proposed to MAPS staff and Buyback Company.
Motion by Kendra. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ron. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Paul?
Any particular reason why we don't sell to the students if they want? Is there an opportunity to say for low-income students to get a iPad?
Well, I think they're kind of nearing their useful life at the end of the year, useful life. And I think there's minimums that we have to sell back to the Buyback Company in order to get those prices.
Linda, then Ron.
Well, at the other, at the HR and Finance Committee meeting, there was also a discussion where teachers or staff would be able to purchase them at a fee as well. So if the teachers wanted to keep theirs, they could purchase them for personal use after the fact as well. So that option was given or if board members wanted to or never were given that option. I think, what did it say, 100 or something like that? 100. Yeah.
Anything else, Linda?
Yeah, that's a number.
Okay, Ron, go ahead.
The other thing that was brought up was these are getting to the end of their useful life, plus they're not going to be supported after another year or so. So you're not going to be able to update, they won't be able to update. That's all, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Ron. Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is the School Perception Survey Proposal. The topic summary sheet was provided by Shannon Murray and with a, comes with an administration recommendation for a motion. Do we have a motion this evening or anyone willing to make one? Jacqueline?
I recommend a motion to accept the proposal from School Perceptions to begin work on developing a survey to the administrative community regarding the MAPS facility study and the potential of an upcoming operations referendum.
Motion by Jacqueline. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Linda?
I just want to, like, when this does get done or planned and the survey does go out, is it going out technology-wise, emails? How are we getting to our older generation?
It's going to be mailed to every household in our district. And there is a QR code and there's digital options for people to have a rather good one, but it will be.
Thank you.
And there was, there will be notes usually on there for if you have multiple voting parties in there that would both like to fill out a survey, that they can request one and there'll be instructions how to do that, to get their own identification code for the survey normally.
Yes.
Trust me, we do that, okay.
Thank you.
Any additional discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Habitat for Humanity donation for the Raise Your Voice Club. Attached was a topic summary sheet and donation form from Tricia Dieter. Due to the fact that this donation is over the $2,500 limit set in Policy 7230, it's coming up to the board separately versus being dislisted in consent agenda. There is a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic this evening? Ron?
Make a motion to approve the donation of funds from Habitat for Humanity valued at $5,000 for continued growth and projects of the Raise Your Voice Club.
A motion by Ron. Do we have a second? Second by Paul. Do we have any discussion or questions on this motion or topic this evening? Any discussion or questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Bob and Janet Grunwald Baseball Field Donation. Attached was a donation form and a government cover memo from head baseball coach Sean Schultz explaining the extent and intention of the donation. Due to the fact, again, that this donation is over $2,500 limit set in Policy 7230, it is coming to the board for separate approval. It does have a recommended motion. Anyone willing to make a motion on this topic? Paul?
I'm, I'm.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the donation of funds for Bob and Janet Grunwald valued at $3,000 for the national baseball team.
Motion by Paul. Do we have a second? Second by Kendra. Do we have any questions or discussion on this motion or topic?
Just thank you very much for all the donations that have come in. It's about great.
Any additional discussion, questions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Do we have any abstentions? Motion carries. Next on our agenda is Niola's Volume 32, Number Two Technical Corrections for our Bylaw 0131.3. The superintendent is authorized to review and make technical corrections to policies that have already been adopted through our normal rulemaking procedures. And there was an overview and list of these technical corrections that. And there was an overview, lists of these technical corrections that Niola was suggesting, and they're being recommended by Mr. Murray. So this is an FYI, that that is happening at this time. Our next topic is, for the same bylaw, some additional technical corrections made through our policy manual to change the district compliance officer from Karen Baker to Amber Aluska. And that does affect a number of policies as listed. So that is also for your information. Next on our agenda is the personnel report, hirings, recruitments, resignations, retirements, et cetera. Attached is the personnel report from Dr. Strike regarding all such things we just mentioned out of the presses, as Shannon alluded to earlier, and a recommended motion. If anyone is willing to make a motion? Paul?
I move to approve the attached personnel report to continue to find the satisfaction of the appropriate liquidated damages for resignations that happened.
We have a motion by Paul. Second by Ron. Do we have any questions or discussions on this motion or topic? Paul?
Shannon, are we being raided by Wausau School District?
Well, we have a couple of Wausau people that have joined us here tonight that we've raided. So it...
I had a news the other night. That was a terrible apology used by the news reporter, that Wausau School District was getting desperate for teachers and would have to possibly raid other schools. But that was kind of a...
That's an interesting one, okay. Generally, it was kind of a gentleman's agreement that you don't do that, but the times have changed a little bit, that people are more willing to do that, unfortunately. We haven't yet to raid anybody. Next week.
You have to go.
Yeah.
Any, any additional questions or discussion? Just one last time, any additional questions or discussions on this motion or topic? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Before I ask for a motion on the consent agenda, I'll ask if anyone wants anything individually pulled from our consent agenda to be dealt with on its own this evening? If not now, I will ask for anyone willing to make a motion for our consent agenda. Kendra?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through C, which includes minutes of the July 19, 2023 meeting, claims, vouchers, and receipts totaling $2,393,508.30, and donations totaling $141.10.
Motion by Kendra. Do we have a second? Second by Jacqueline. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Any abstentions? All right, thank you, Kendra. Motion carries. The one abstention is doubted, Tammy. Thank you. Items for future meetings, at this time, board members can suggest anything for future meetings, either of the regular board or for committees coming up. The alternate method for that, of course, is to contact the chair of a committee as you think of something, or to get in touch with Shannon or myself. Any items for future meetings? All right.
I actually, sorry.
Go ahead, Kendra.
I'm just looking at the list, I just have a question to revisit. Um, with school fast approaching, and I know we always talk about the middle school. Are we keeping, are they doing anything different with, like, the... I know they have the lights flashing that they brought in. There's always concern. Yeah, like drop-off, whatever. Is the city doing anything different? And I don't know.
No, so we actually looked at that pretty closely last year with the city and, um, what the current setup with the drop-off in the front and the bus station, it isn't about as good as we get at that location.
Okay.
Yeah.
But I thought so, I just was looking at the list, I saw it on there, so I wanted to ask.
Ron, go ahead.
They did put up signs by, uh, the grocery store, it's six word there, for bus stop. I mean, so people get an idea that it's a bus stop, and we'll find out.
Any additional discussion or points to bring up? All right. Thank you. Just a reminder that on Thursday morning, tomorrow morning will be no different, approximately 8:15 a.m. on Blue J730 radio. We will, tomorrow morning, Mr. Murray and myself will discuss tonight's board meeting. Future meetings to be aware of, the safety committee next meets on Monday, August 28th, at 12:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. Bridges Virtual Academy Governance Board meets on Thursday, August 31st, at 12:45. They meet virtually. Facilities Committee next meets on Wednesday, September 6th, 3:30 p.m. in the boardroom. CTP, or Curriculum Technology Pupil Services Committee, meets on Wednesday, September 13th, at 4:30 p.m. in the boardroom. Finance Human Resources Committee next meets on Wednesday, September 13th, immediately following CTP, no sooner than 5 p.m. here in the boardroom. The annual meeting and budget hearing will be held on Monday, September 18th, at 5:30 p.m. in the high school auditorium. Next regular scheduled board meeting is for Wednesday, September 27th, 5:30 p.m. here in the boardroom. Next on our agenda is the contemplated motion to adjourn to executive close session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes under Section 19.85, Part N1, Part N C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of a public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. Purpose of the close session is to discuss the superintendent's evaluation artifacts and goals for the 2023-2024 school year. Is anyone willing to make that motion this evening?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Ron. Do we have a second? A second by Paul. Tammy, do we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Ron Liberty?
Aye.
Kendra Osness?
Aye.
Jacqueline Grumler?
Aye.
Linda Yingling?
Aye.
Paul Crew?
Aye.
Kevin Blake?
Aye.